Welcome back to the February 14th, 2022 Dear Dearborn Board of Education Meeting, the regular meeting. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate that you've come tonight. And we have been as a board showing our and as administration showing our appreciation to our staff, but we also wanted to thank you, our community partners and our parents, and show a little appreciation to you on this Valentine's Day. So when you came in, you may have noticed, just a small token. So thank you for spending the evening with us, and thank you for being partners in the education of your children. It is very important, and children do have better outcomes when their parents are involved and the community supports them. First item, please.
Real call. Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Deanne Brojo.
Here.
Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Pacheco.
Here.
Trustee Thorpe.
Here.
Trustee Watts here. President McDonald.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Ms. Mary Timp, President, Principal of Duval Elementary.
President McDonald, Dr. Maleko, trustees, thank you for inviting Duval. We're honored to be here. And we're going to have our students introduce themselves.
My name is Emma Knowles, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Abbas Artui, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Eleonora Deller, and I am in first grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Come on up, guys. You need, go this way. Eleonora, thank you so much. You did a fabulous job. Emma, thank you. And Abbas, terrific job. Thank you so much.
One more round.
Next item, please. Superintendent Updates, Agenda Items.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the agenda item we have as our normal with retirements. And so I want to thank and congratulate the retirees for this month. Rajah Badun, Carol Seizik, Jamil Fawaz, Sharon Corhonen, Deborah Mallon, Carla Moylin, Phyllis Renicki, Ikmat Salami, and Dr. Jill Chokol, who's been working with us here. So she's got a few more months to go. So congratulations to her and all of our retirees if we can. And I'll move along to non-agenda items. That's okay. So I want to just a few announcements mentioning school safety. So you know, throughout the year, we've dealt with COVID safety. We've dealt with other issues. We know about the tragedy in Oxford. And again, our thoughts and prayers are with those, that school community. One of the things we do in the district is a lot of times that'll be the hot topic of the time, unfortunately, and safety has been. And so safety, whether it be, you know, emergency drills and things like that, and then COVID. But we're practicing all of it all the time. And I know we have Mr. Leacher here. And so we've been, we were glad that we were able to shift some of our professional development for teachers. And so although January was a month when we were really hearing about COVID and the Omicron, we were still doing what we need to do and train and practice in case of an emergency that we hope we never need to use. So really happy that we're moving forward on that. I also want to mention, as you're aware, we did have three snow day cancellations, forgiveness days. And we are in good shape because those are the only three that we've used to this point in time. Superintendents and districts are given six days every year. And so we are in good shape. And you can also go for a waiver for an additional three if needed, up to nine. So but you have to use it for, you know, true emergencies. One of the days that we are planning to go online is March 1. And that was because of the special election that's being called by the governor replacing the state representative when mayor, mayor received his office position. And we had three options. One is we could have the election on that day with students in school. We didn't want to do that. We worked with the city clerk, and we're worried about safety among COVID, not just COVID, but just other issues that we've seen. Another option would have been just to reschedule a day. And a third option, which we went for, was to go virtual. It's actually be a good test of our system as well, in case we need to do that. We wouldn't do it just for testing, but the fact of the matter is, is that we don't want to have our students in school and we have the general public coming in. And the rules are different for the general public coming into election as far as COVID and otherwise. So we are planning for that. I also want to mention, as we know, the Omicron was the big piece in COVID data that we were dealing with, coming back after the New Year's break. There was a shortage of test kits across the state and the nation for that matter. We have a good stockpile of test kits now. And I want to thank Congresswoman Dingle, who really stepped up to make sure that we would get the kits because they were not readily available. And we did receive some right from the CDC. So we have kits now to keep us going so that we can, you know, use that mitigation tool to protect people. So we're grateful for that. And I want to mention, too, that our COVID data has been really going in a positive. I just saw the, you know, the weekly report that the positivity rate in the county being down to around 11.7%. And our school data is also at a very good place for a few different areas. One, our staffing. We now have 100% of subs that we can fill. We have what we call 100% fill rate. We didn't have that kind of great fill rate before the pandemic. So thanks to our HR department who's worked hard, we've added, you know, salaries and things like that to make sure that we're filling those vacancies. Now, when we did have an elevated absence in the month of January, at times, we had people in buildings that were stepping up. It was all hands on deck, and they were in all sorts of different positions. And we also had central office that were going into buildings, my cabinet, myself included. We were going in, we were substitute teaching or substitute principal, doing what we needed to do to help out. But we're in good shape right now. And our COVID data, as far as cases last week in the school, was one of the lowest I've seen since one week in September, maybe one week in October. So all that is going in a positive direction. And I want to thank everyone for their flexibility. You mentioned staff appreciation that did step up and do what was necessary so that we know that in-person instruction is best for our students. We've done it in a safe manner. We'll continue to do that following our data. We're also aware that just Friday, and it was Wayne County and other counties last week did announce that they are pulling back on the mask mandate. That would go into effect March 1, I believe. So it's till the end of this month. Our team, I had a county superintendent meeting on Friday and knew that something might be happening. So our team, actually, our crisis team together, and we met on Friday to discuss it. We're going to have more meetings. We still have some time, and we'll go through our normal process. I think what served us well is a couple of things, is we haven't not been reactionary throughout this whole pandemic. We've been steady, looking at our data and making informed decisions with getting input from all those involved that needed, especially on the crisis team. And so we'll continue to do that. So more to come on that front, but we are aware of that mandate being lessened. And we will be, you know, providing more information. But we do have a few weeks because it's not until, like I said, the end of the month. And I also want to give a shout out. This is February, the board did pass a resolution, I believe it was several years ago, for recognizing Black History Month. And I know we have Dr. Grover, who sends information out. We also have students that are involved with lessons and other things. And so we just want to recognize the contributions of Black Americans in society. So wanted to make a recognition there. This past week was School Counselor Week and Bus Driver Appreciation. And I know we've had our bus drivers here. I've also sent messages to our counselors. And so just want to shout out to them. And we appreciate the work they did. And I also have to say that I know Social Work Appreciation Month is coming up next month in March, so we'll talk about it at that meeting. But Ms. Weaver over at Smith is on the Michigan Association of School Social Workers for the State, works with Dr. Rice. And I know the board's aware that I'm involved in state associations. We have Hema Alcadres on the State Association of the Secondary School Principals. All those are very good to serve on because it really does give Dearborn an advantage and an influence on important decisions that are going on in Lansing. So want to thank her. Had a great meeting with her last week. And my last announcement is just that the Bond Committee continues their work. They've been meeting on a regular basis. Over a month ago, they started. Appreciate everyone that's been serving on the committee for their input. My understanding, it's been a very good process. We are hopefully looking at a possible, and I sent to hold for March 23, a possible study session here with the board so that they could present their recommendations after serving on that committee. So that is my report for today. And I thank President McDonald for thanking our parents. It was a great, and I appreciate her and Julianne Harris helping out with that, and her husband, my understanding, too. So thank you. That's my report.
Next item, please.
Trustee Barry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Barry?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Maleko, I definitely agree with you. It's almost two years now since March of 2020. We have not been reactionary. We have always been ahead of the game, I guess, just a lack of better words to use. But okay, with the mandate on masks expiring, most likely, February 28 in Wayne County, then they're probably going to leave it up to the district. What do you see? We're not going to have another meeting before then. What do you see? I mean, like, I don't know how much you can disclose. What have you been talking to your team about? I mean, what would make forces to keep the mask mandates going in Dearborn?
So we did discuss that with that issue on Friday. And obviously, we, you know, we don't want to make a quick decision. But generally, what we've done is followed the county guidelines throughout the pandemic. It served us very well. So I would anticipate that we are going in that direction as well. But I still want to go through the important process of having these meetings and getting through and deliberating on all the, you know, the circumstances surrounding that. If you might recall, prior to, in the summer, when the data looked really good and the vaccines were out, and we thought that we weren't going to have to have masks, we went from going possibly to making it optional, then we said recommended. And then eventually, the county, we stepped in, and we, at the time, we made that decision in our best interest, a week before the county made their decision. But it looked like it was heading in that direction. So I anticipate, you know, they're making these decisions for a reason. They're following the science, you know, and it's served us well. Our nurses are always in contact with them. So I anticipate we will likely move in the direction the rest of, you know, the county is. But we definitely want to do our due diligence and go through all the, you know, through that process, through those conversations, to look at any, you know, issues that may arise when we make such a potential announcement.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting to make a decision, you know, tonight. But the way things, the direction this pandemic is going, I've been following positivity rate, too. I mean, I mean, it's probably going to be single digits next week and keep dropping. If that's a direction, then yeah, I think we need to follow what Wayne County does. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Trustee Mosip.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Maleko, I'd like to echo your support for the school counselors, as well as the bus drivers. I know they're, they are support staff to our teachers, but we do honor them to, and give them an equal weight of their support. I remember my counselors being very supportive. And at least the ones that I had for a number of years, and some were not. But I believe that the counselors that we have in Dearborn are very inspiring, and we truly appreciate their support. I know many, especially at certain high schools where they have a load of so many students, and they try to get to as many students as possible, as well as bus drivers, who actually, we've kind of shortened their distance time. And I know many of their colleagues were, had COVID situations, and they had to cover even more routes. So we do appreciate their support during those difficult times and making it, making sure that students are getting to their destinations our time. Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe.
Going back to what Trustee Barry was saying with, with COVID, while the county is currently saying that the mandate would end, they're still having other recommendations for, for health. And what I would expect, Dr. Maleko, is that we still have a healthy stockpile of masks. So if students want a mask, they could get one from us. I would also further assume, and let me know if this would be wrong, that we would still be supporting with possibly testing and/or vaccination clinics and promoting that through the community?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, we're going to be, I just met with Nancy Berry on Friday. We, it was Thursday or Friday last week, we did a taping. So CSIST has been our partner now. Micah Salee's taken the lead for the district, and we have multiple clinics that are currently scheduled. And we're looking at more. In fact, we may actually choose to do a very, what she asked for was maybe like a nine-hour day one on a weekend, that we may even look to partner somewhere in the city. So we're going to continue to do those clinics, absolutely.
Well, I know the nurses have not led us down a stray path yet. So I appreciate all the work they've done.
I just want to reiterate, you said stray path, not straight path.
I said stray. I got a, I got a breath mint going right now. Sorry.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Since we're talking about COVID, then I'm going to bring up now, I was going to wait until the end of the evening. But I, I sent this to Dr. Maleko and David Mustin to send out to all of the schools. But I just received from the librarian at the Esper Branch Library on Warren Avenue, the east end of Dearborn, that on February 22, at 5:30 PM, they are going to be holding a community gathering with Dr. Mohammed Hamami, who will answer all your questions about COVID-19. And they will be having available wellness kits for kids, free books for kids, and crafts for kids that evening as well. So if anyone is interested in bringing their children and/or just themselves to get their questions answered from the doctor, he's, he was a chief health strategist and former director of the Wayne County Health Department. So he would be one to help our parents navigate what is going to be coming up. So that is on February 22. And I just wanted to let everyone know that
That's at Esper.
At Esper Library at 5:30.
Trustee Watts?
Just to follow up with, Trustee Thorpe had mentioned that going, if, at the end of the month, if there was recommendation that masks were recommended but not required, that we're still putting in mitigation methods that we still have in the classrooms. But the other thing would be, if we did see an increase in COVID cases in classrooms, that we would be going remote with those classrooms, correct?
Yeah, if we have, our process has been, and it's served us well, as we start at the class level, and we would put the classrooms first. And if necessary, we would look at a school. You know, we only had to do that once this year with school, as we look at our data. And yes, we'd have mitigation. And even if the mandate goes away, as was mentioned, we're still going to, you know, people are still going to have the ability to wear the masks, even if they, if they choose to do so. So that is definitely not something we're going to, you know, we're not going to prohibit it. It's going to be one of those, whether, you know, follow the current county guidelines that are changing and not mandate.
Right. I know. Because I, we hear that the county's no longer going to mandate it. And I think we all take a sigh of relief that we can get rid of these. But COVID, it's still going to be here. So I think we just have to remember that, or, you know, the numbers are going down. So that's something to be thankful for. But we still have to be making sure that we are safety first. So, all right, thank you.
And the other thing we made optional, as you might recall, I mentioned it last month, but we had these KN95s. We had a stockpile that Mark Andrews had of initially about 500,000. And so people, we're not requiring them, but if people want them, or staff or students, we're giving them out. And I've seen them distributed at the schools. So thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I'm buying, just to make sure. I'm by no means celebrating the masks going away, but this, this, I'm going to say that this will be a parent decision, if they want their kids to wear them or not. So of course, yeah, we're going to continue. I think I'm wearing my mask for a while. I mean, I got other things I'm dealing with. So but just like when we closed the schools down, we knew it was going to cost us. The students were going to fall behind, and we planned for them. We had summer school and a few other things. So now, with, with the masks and everything else that these students are dealing with, that's also setting them back in a different capacity, you know, with, with mental health, with social, just everything else that they're dealing with. So I'm not saying, all right, let's ban the masks from Dearborn Public Schools. But at that point, just, you know, there's no, probably no, should be no reason to make it mandatory during public schools. That's all, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Next item. Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Hello, everyone. My, my name is Ronnie Abdullah. I'm a senior at Etzel Ford.
And I'm Julianne Norrie, and I'm a junior at Etzel Ford.
Congratulations, Joey Moreno, a senior at Etzel Ford, who's been named a MHSAA Scholar Athlete Award finalist. Commendations to the Etzel Ford DECA students who competed in January in the DECA District Eight competition. The following students earned designation and awards. Jada Garner earned a medal for mastery of the comprehensive exam for Principles of Hospitality and Tourism Series. Evelyn Maru earned medals for both her role play and mastery of the comprehensive exam for Principles of Business and Administrative Series. Evelyn is also an event finalist and is headed to the DECA District Eight State Competition. Ernesto Garza earned medals for both his role play and mastery of the comprehensive exam for Sports and Entertainment Marketing Series. Ernesto is also an event finalist and is headed to the DECA District Eight State Competition. Commendations to the DHS Wrestling Team. Last Wednesday, the team won the MHSAA Team Wrestling District Championship, the first one for the pioneers since 1994. The team is led by seniors John Best and Ethan Roseberry, and head Barry, and head coach Hassan Barry. Assistant coaches are Jack Cassidy, Khodr Huballah, Dino Barry Jr., and Mohammed Malah. The MHSAA Team Regionals will be on February 16. Commendations to Fatima Bezi, a 12th grade student in the Virtual K-312 School. Fatima went above and beyond to help one of her classmates who speaks very little English and is learning the language. Fatima was so patient, kind, and caring, and helped her classmate every day. Commendations to the Virtual K-312 Student Advisory Committee. The ninth grade students facilitate weekly peer tutoring for middle school students in a fourth grade class, and also created a virtual game night for high school. The committee includes Rayyan Bezzi, Hadiya Zahar, Hauda Al Khafaji, Hibba Al Jahmi, Sana Al Jahmi, Wahda Ahmed, and Zahra Al Abas. Commendations to Mr. Mark Tyler for organizing mock interviews for his and Mr. Remington's senior class at Etzel Ford High School. Students learned valuable lessons about needed employability skills, and most importantly, how to obtain a job. Thank you for all of our volunteer interviewers as well.
Commendations to Batu Reda, who broke the Fortin single game scoring record with 40 points in the team's win over Churchill on February 1. She broke the previous record of 39 by Yasmin Hamid. Congratulations to the Dearborn Unified Hockey Team. DU won the Mayor's Cup this year by defeating Divine Child by a score of 5 to 2 on January 29. Commendations to Rahab Nader Jaddala, a senior at Fortin High, and Ronnie Abdullah from Etzel Ford High. Both students have been named semifinalists for the Cook College Scholarship, sorry. The two students are among 411 high school seniors from across the country who have been chosen as semifinalists for the highly selective scholarship. Commendations to DHS Sports Team, who participated in the hashtag Oxford Strong Night on February 4. MHSAA selected that as a day when member schools would come together in a show of support for our colleagues at Oxford High School. DHS teams wore Oxford Strong t-shirts during warmups on the bench and at halftime. Congratulations to the high school athletes from Fortin, Dearborn High, and Etzel Ford, who have committed to continue their sports at the collegiate level next year. Also, thank you to the coaches, teaching staff, administrative team, and all the other supporters who work together to help our athletes and students succeed on a daily basis. Commendations to Woodward teacher Brian Bachelor and all of the Woodward students who are part of the service squad. These students do a great job keeping their classmates safe while walking them to and from school. Commendations to the UNICEF students who recently competed in the fourth annual Scripps Spelling Bee at the school. Champion speller Hadiya Al Halabi, eighth grade, and runner-up Mohammed Zaidan, sixth grade. We'll move on to the Scripps WXYZ Channel 7 Spelling Bee on March 24. Students compete in the intense two and a half hour spelling bee with a final 10 rounds between four exceptional aviators, including the two winners in sixth grade, Esma Bezzi and Jafar Reda. Look for more Spelling Bee winners next month after communities and high schools host a district spelling bee. Commendations to Carson Post from Howard Elementary. Carson submitted the winning design that will be used on the t-shirt given to all participants in the spring walk and roll challenge. Walk and Roll encourages students to walk or bike to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item, please. Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees. The following donations have been offered to the school district. Acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Salina Intermediate, Woodward, and UNICEF schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the Religious Diversity Program. A donation of $4,000 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a sensory hallway. A donation of $4,559 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for wood shop equipment. A donation of $538.20 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for pencil sharpeners. A donation of $16,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with Cleveland Cliffs to be used for outdoor learning space. A donation of $416.50 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Sunshine Oil. Funds were used to purchase candy for a trunk or treat event in October. A donation of a violin and music stand has been offered to Bryant Middle School by Mike and Sharon Corpalongo to be used by a student who doesn't have a violin. A donation of $5,802.50 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Westbourne Chrysler to be used for parts, to be used for lab activities, as well as visual aids. A donation of 55 girls' jackets has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by UAW Local 600 to be used for students in need. A donation of 528 bottles of hand sanitizer has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Papaya Fruit Market to be distributed to every classroom. A donation of one case of adult face masks has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Play Atlantis to be used by the staff. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Bob's Furniture to be used to purchase furniture for the lobby. A grant of $2,000 has been offered to McCullough UNICEF School by NASA Glenn Research Center Office of STEM Engagement to be used by sixth grade students who will participate in a NASA Engineer Design Challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone who made those donations. It truly takes a village, and we appreciate everyone being involved in the education of our students.
Next item, please. Staff recognition.
Good evening. So this month, we're celebrating our clerical staff. We have a few people here. I'd like to ask to come on up and join me. Due to our COVID mitigation, we couldn't have all of the clerical staff here. We have a few wonderful team members. Sandra Asaf, Halla Berry, she was tentative on her attendance. Amina Debaja, Khalud Faraj, Shannon Mandzuski, Zainah Olavi, Deborah Pierce, Jumana Zagir, and Nada Zric.
Thank you, everyone. And before you sit down.
Oh, hang on one second. Sorry, trustee, I have a few words.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To say about them.
I'm jumping the gun.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. To our amazing clerical staff. No, I appreciate it. Thank you. To our amazing clerical staff, this is not nearly gonna cover all the questions they answer, but we'd be here all night if I listed everything that they do, and everything that they answer, and how they support us. To our amazing clerical staff, you answer an infinite, an infinite number of questions each day. You tend to and care for all staff, and especially all of our children that need ice, had an accident, forgot their boots, don't feel well, and sometimes just need an extra hug, because Monday, after three snow days, is hard. The staff counts on you to fill in the gaps of information needed by the principal, the staff, each of their colleagues, the parents, the students, as loads of information flows through the main office of any school building. You are the vigilant eyes and ears of the front line that act swiftly, proactively, and calmly to maintain an orderly and a safe atmosphere. You smile through the challenges, and you celebrate with the team, as your beat is what keeps the blood flowing to the heart of a school. Thank you.
Absolutely. Now, before you sit down, we would like to get a photograph. So any members of the board that would like to take a photograph, please join the clerical group. Next item, please.
Staff appreciation drawing. So the nomination application is still open, and we encourage all staff to continue to nominate their colleagues. I can resend out the link, so everyone has it again, fresh in their email. So this month's winners, $10, or there's 10 winners. Nine of them will get $50 gift cards, and one of them will get a $100 gift card. And we choose the names by a spinning wheel, electronic spin wheel. So today, the winners are: Dearborn High cleaned up somehow. So it must be their night to shine. Stacy Romler, social worker at Dearborn High. Congratulations, Stacy. Rachel Swift, you can clap. Language arts teacher at Dearborn High. Tim Smedley, UNIS middle school teacher. Lauren Chamut, teacher at Hague Elementary. Kathleen Dillon, teacher at Lori. Christina Kalai, school psychologist. Asmahan Mashraha, McCullough Elementary teacher. Bijajo Bill Guido, I'm sorry, Guido, Guido. He's an engineer at Dearborn High. And if anyone that knows Bijajo, you know he works from his heart, 24/7. I'm sorry, messed up your name, Bill. Candace Towler, teacher at Long. Maha Mackey Ayub is the supervisor at Adult Education. I'm gonna read just one of them. And I have to say, Maha was the $100 winner. Let's see. Kathleen Dillon, the teacher at Lori. Kathleen Dillon, she is always working. She constantly goes above and beyond to meet student needs, is in constant communication with the students that are at home with COVID, and adjusts learning to help close the gap and catch students up. Also for Kathleen. She goes above and beyond to help out her students and her team. She is a hard worker and cares about those around her. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you to all of our staff who do an amazing job every day. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Executive session, closed expulsion, January 10th, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 67. Organizational P-12 meeting, January 10th, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 68. Regular P-12 meeting, January 10th, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 69. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
I have a move by trustee Barry and a support by trustee Di Ambrogio. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any corrections in the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a roll call for approval, please?
There is one, just minor correction. My last name was misspelled on page eight. That can be corrected. On the regular minute.
On page eight?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other corrections? Hearing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Special reports, benchmark assessment goals.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees, and Dr. Maleko. We have a short presentation tonight on Public Act 48, and this is about building goals. We typically, we do have law that requires every building to have goals, which is Public Act 25, but this is the first time we have to report on this specific one. And this is really in light of the learning loss due to pandemic, and how to use the state aid for buildings. For 2122, all buildings were required to establish goals and measure the growth of these goals in kindergarten through eighth grade. High schools were also required to establish achievement goals.
Excuse me.
Yes.
We need quiet, please. We're conducting a meeting, and we need to hear the presentation. Thank you. Go ahead.
So the requirements of Public Act 48, Section 98B, is to establish and measure the growth of these goals in the middle of the year, end of the year, and they should be aligned to and measured by a benchmark assessment that's approved by MDE. The benchmark assessments include NWEA, or IRADI, and three others approved assessments. We are required to complete the goals by September 15th of last fall, which we did, and we, the buildings presented to their staff at the building levels. We have to present the progress of the established goals by February of 22nd, which is the first board meeting that occurs in February, and this time around, it was required that we report them verbally like we are doing today in the past, last year, about the equal plan, which is the extended continuity of learning. We were required to just post it on the website. So for now, we are presenting, and they are going to be posted on the website. It's also required that districts who wish to receive the state aid to have the goals disaggregated by grade level, subgroups, and also mode of instruction. In our district, we have in-person learning. We do not have virtual. So we are reporting on that, too. Goals must, like we said, it's this right here, the link that will take us to the goals on the website. If parents wish to go school by school and look at these goals, they are available on our district website, which is this logo, the transparency page. If you click on it, you will see the goals. Do you wanna click on it then? So that takes you to the website, and you have the individual schools. In a minute, Dr. Patterson will explain how we establish these goals with the principals. I think it's the other presentation. Okay.
So I'd like to just take a few moments to explain how we did this process. So in, as Mrs. Faraj had said, we've been doing this work for several years as part of our Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Plan. Schools, you know, each year take a look at what we call a comprehensive needs assessment. They look at their data. They set goals for themselves. So this process wasn't new for us. On September 8th, we already had a meeting with all of the principals here in the boardroom, so we just took that time to take a look at their historical data, so that everybody could set some what we call stretch goals. We wanted to take a look at what they were doing and set something in the realistic range, but something, you know, something that we would strive to obtain. So the principals looked at their data, and then they set goals. They took it back to their buildings and worked with their staff just to see if they wanted to make any adjustments of those, of those goals. And as we stated, we're required to present these goals twice a year. The goals, as we said, can be found on the website. Here's another screenshot, and we also have the URL listed, so you can, you can find it. And for tonight, we really only have the progress towards our high school goals to show you. Based on the board's direction, we've been trying to eliminate testing. So in K through 8, we only did winter testing for K through 3 reading, just because that is still required by the reading by third law. And that was, as I said, just for reading. We did have a few teachers optionally give it just for their own classroom purposes, but it wasn't a district mandate. The high schools, because they don't do benchmark assessments, can choose their own goal to use, and it has to be something that can be measured within a year. So all of our high schools chose a goal of 100% passing rates, and since our semester one grades are available right now, that is something we have that we can report to you. And in the spring, when we are done with NWEA testing, we will come back and show you our progress towards the K through 8 goals. And I believe the board had asked this question at the last board meeting, how were our students doing on semester one grades? So what I have up here is the last several years, the year prior to the COVID shutdown, up until the first semester grades. Semester one is the blue bars, and semester two is the black bar. So back in 2019, our last kind of normal year, at the semester, we had 96% of the grades given passing grades. And then by the second semester, that was at 94. And then in 2020, the first semester was still a part of the normal year, so we were at 95%. And then that second half of the year is when everybody was doing remote learning for the first time. And then, as we came back last year, you can see there was a little bit of a dip, just because we were doing a lot of, I mean, it was the year that we were, we were virtual. But as you can see, this year, we're, we're close to where we were pre-pandemic, and, you know, we're on track to try to get closer to that goal. High school principals chose that because it really aligns to the work they're doing every day with the MTSS, which is our multi-tiered system of support program, trying to get students that are falling behind or struggling the help they need on a, on a daily basis. So, so that's our progress as the beginning of the year, and we'll be back again in, in June to, to report back on the K through 8 goals. Any questions?
Trustee Thorpe?
You mentioned that this is gonna be on the website. Is it on the homepage? Where exactly will people go if they wanna see this?
The direct link is, it's under the budget transparency link. So if you go to the, to the main website, this is our budget and transparent reporting page, and this is where you can see all of the plans that we report publicly.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
I just wanted to say thank you, because I know last time, when you were here, that you heard us about the reduced testing to our students. So I appreciate that, and I know you, you and your team are working hard on that. So I'm glad to see that we are getting some relief for our students. So thank you for that.
Trustee Petrikov?
Well, number one, can we change the name of that page? Because if it's a budget transparency page, people aren't going to understand that that's where they should be looking for other kinds of data reporting. I think we need to add something to make it a little user-friendly.
We can try to clarify to where that link is a little easier to understand.
I also wanted to ask, because I see in 2020, we have a, in the black bar, 100% passing rate. I had a couple of parents approach me just recently about, they're being suspect about some of the grades that were reported originally when we went virtually online, and how we could verify the authenticity. And we had this conversation as a board, too, about, you know, the work being done when we, the students weren't in the classroom kind of thing. Are we confident that what we're reporting is an accurate reflection of the students and where they were at?
Are you talking about from the spring of the 2020 year?
Yeah.
I, I think that with the situation that we were in, we were trying to make every effort that we could on a daily basis to reach all of the students that we could and give them the help they, that they needed, knowing that they were struggling with, with, you know, working on a new online platform that they hadn't had before. So those grades were based on the students' progress in that new, you know, environment that we were in.
Under those circumstances.
And, yes.
And I think, just to remind everyone, when 2020 hit in March, when we were closed, there were, those three months, the instruction mode was different. It was different coming from the state, because it was more of getting through the semester kind of thing across the state and the nation. So it does make sense, because it was one of those directives that came from the state superintendent, you know, from the top, saying, we wanna make sure that all students are successful. And so it probably wasn't for a couple of months. It was a different time. The next year, it does make sense to me, the 20, excuse me, 21, because that's when we were virtual for most of the year. We know that in-person instruction is more effective. So that's how I look at those differently, because that, those three months in 2020 were different than when we came back, and then we had to have all our classes online and everything. So I think.
I just wanna make sure when people go to look at this, that they understand what this is actually reflecting. My one last question is, is I'm starting to read that the SATs, which we use in our high school testing capabilities, are, a lot of colleges are scrapping the whole concept of using that as entrance. I know the state requires it.
Yes.
At this point in time. Do we anticipate that there's gonna be a change, a shift, something with that in the near future?
I would not anticipate that in the new, near future. We have to give a high school assessment.
Of some sort.
In one of the high school grades. Most of the, and each state has some leeway in how they do it. Most, most states across the nation give it an 11th grade. But SAT isn't the test that we have to give. There are other tests that are given in other states. If we did not give the SAT, we would have to give some type of high school assessment that covered, you know, the majority of the high school standards. The Smarter Balanced Assessment is used in other states. There's some other exams that do it as well. And because it takes a while to get all of those changes made going through all of the legislation, I don't anticipate that happening in the next few, in the next few years. So I would say, at least for the, the near future, the SAT will, will be that test for the high school accountability as part of the Every Student Succeeds Act.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Mosip?
Thank you, Dr. Patterson and Ms. Faraj. My question is, so the, this was passed, I believe, as part of the School Aid Fund by the legislature?
Yes.
So those plans that were, are gonna be submitted to the state, do they have to be approved somehow? And when you were saying you have a goal of 100% passes rate, like, are we setting up ourselves for not achieving that goal, though? I mean, is that, is that achievable?
Yeah. The goals have to be established and reviewed by the district. As long as they are stretch goals, and buildings try their best to achieve these goals, we're in a good shape. The state does not check whether we've achieved the goals or not, but they do require that we establish goals based on best practice.
What I'm saying, as far as setting that overstretch goal.
Yeah.
We set a goal that is realistic of, I know we're right now at a 94%, which is amazing. But should we say, did we set a realistic goal? Because I don't think it can get every student to pass.
That makes sense. That makes sense with the high school. But they did have a discussion when we were meeting in this room and they said with the support of the graduation intervention specialist and with communications with the families, we can put that every student is going to pass. Passing grades is easier to achieve than growth or achievement on standardized assessment or NWEA. That's why for NWA, the K through 8 looked at three years of data and then they measured how much growth they've been making every year. And they set it up to be 2 or 3% more than what they've done in the past. So that was more achievable than the grades. Yeah, we do see your point and you're right about that. But they did challenge themselves to work on every student passing their school courses in high school.
That's great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.